I have one guy, I just think that.
It's a story.
Yeah.
I'm still the same.
They said it's trash.
He don't look at me now, he can make that leave.
What if it's a pair of bones?
I agree, I totally agree with him. I said, I'm gonna go and do it and I feel good about doing that.
Yeah, but I want, you know, I know the deal again. This guy is not getting, and I agree with my concern in the way to me. Somebody knows, oh, they get used to that and get back and get right up.
I was nodding my head, you, you, you just like this. I'll say, I tried, you didn't come out.
Right, right. I look forward to it, I look forward to it.
She's excited about it too, she calls me all the time. You've seen her.
You did, you did a good job and you were. Didn't you have that?
We need to make sure you're not worrying yourself.
You won't hear the squeaking.
I know they exist.
They don't want money. I heard, I heard. We heard. We heard. Claire, who, who was squeaking? Not you all. Oh. It's right there. I could hear it at all.
All right, well, we're coming back to order now. All right, we're gonna now go into, consider some items for action as we go forward. There's a communication from the mayor's office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to section 2.2, that's 3711 Code of Virginia as amendment. I need a motion. Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Pres, Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes, thank you. There's a communication from Councilmember Patricia White Boyd, Chair of the City Council Personnel Committee requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to section 2.2, that's 3711 Code of Virginia as amendment. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes, thank you. Uh, any discussions, clarifications, additions, or deletions to the 2:00 PM agenda? Or any topics by the mayor, members of city council? Hearing none, we will now go into our briefings and I'm pleased to recognize that City Attorney, Mr. Tim Spencer.
Yes, thank you Mayor, we have a proposed charter, city charter and code amendment for, to allow the Director of Real Estate Valuation be appointed by council for consideration. David Collins, Deputy City Attorney in our office, has worked on this and do a quick presentation. This involves both a charter and code section change. The charter currently is silent as to the appointment, so we, I believe that council could consider code amendments to make it happen. And then we've already advertised, or looking as part of this, to advertise the charter change, have a public hearing on the 19th to be able to address the charter, which would be just housekeeping. We believe we could get support there. There's a little bit of risk in doing it, but not much since I would view this as housekeeping on the charter change. But with that, David Collins.
Good morning, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, and members of city council.
Morning.
At your request, our office has looked at the process for bringing the Director of Real Estate Valuation under the appointment and management of city council. That process will require amendment of the city charter as well as the city code. The proposed amendments to the city charter are section eight, which would bring the Director as a council-appointed officer. The proposed amendments to section nine would set the term of the Director to be the same term as the other council-appointed officers, to be elected in September for a term starting the following October and for a term of two years. Finally, the proposed change to section 23 of the city charter would allow city council to appoint officers and deputies by ordinance for that office as it has the power to do for other council-appointed officers. The proposed amendments to the city code are 22.3-2, which would make the Director eligible for the same retirement and pension benefits afforded other council-appointed officers. The proposed amendments to 3237 of the city code would remove the Director from being appointed by the city manager to being appointed by city council. And finally, the proposed amendment to section 3237 would make the Director responsible to city council instead of the Director of Finance. The process for amending chart, the charter requires that the public input first be solicited by city council, and that can either be done through an election or through a public hearing. Our office recommends it be done by a public hearing as it's the most practical. If council adopts a resolution that would then authorize the city attorney to petition the General Assembly, the charter could be considered by the General Assembly at its next session in 2025. As Mr. Spencer mentioned, our office is recommending that the city code be amended first, followed by the city charter. And in your materials in your packet, we have included a notice of public hearing for August 19th to start that process for amending the city charter. And the proposed amendments to the ordinance, to the city code, there's a draft ordinance which we would present to city council at the August 19th hearing. If council has any objection or no objections, we will proceed with advertising the public hearing for August 19th. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you Mayor, I'm in a little bit of a quandary because I haven't been here for the discussions about this. And in my past experience on council, we always had such a good relationship with the Director of Real Estate Valuation. I'd like to know why this change has been envisioned and what will be the advantage or disadvantage. I was always taught the least responsibility you have as an elected official, the better off you are, which usually meant you don't add more people to be in charge of instead of less. But if you could help me understand the background so I'll be informed.
I might, I can go back to 2003 when I believe you were on council.
I was, but I don't remember.
And that's when, believe it or not, we made the change. The real estate valuation used to be appointed by council, and it was at that time that it was.
I don't remember that.
That it was moved.
I must not have been here when we appointed anybody, well, no, Will was here.
Will Clayton.
Exactly, and it was, so this is actually going back to that. And we're very fortunate that Dr. Patton has a unique perspective from across the Commonwealth. And I don't want to speak for her, but Dr. Patton, I believe, has indicated that what we're going to is a pattern that you've seen across the Commonwealth.
I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem if that's where we're headed, I just need, I remember now, I'm 77 years old and I don't remember much anymore, so this is very helpful.
And one other good benefit, and I'm gonna take the words of our current real estate valuerator, Casey Bratton. He has said that, listen, to keep real estate valuation pure, if you will, so that we're only considering the property.
Right.
Please don't tie us to the budget process and by putting us under the umbrella of Finance Department where the budget's getting developed, he doesn't even want the perception.
See, I see it as a political problem, so I'm looking at it from the other side, but, no, you've answered my question.
Right, and, and the fact that council has gone through this discussion is, is plenty for me to be fine with it. I just didn't understand and I really appreciate y'all taking the time to bring me up today, so, okay? No more questions.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, we did, we did have extensive discussion amongst council, so I, I think it was the general consensus or we wouldn't be moving.
Well, I would, I would expect that, but you know, what I was taught years ago is don't vote on anything unless you understand it. Now, I can't say I always have, but I've tried.
Mr. Mayor, I did, I did have a question if I could for, excuse me, if I could ask David a question. On the, and this is for the city attorney as well, on the ordinance under your section, section 32-37 appointment, where the Director of Real Estate Valuation shall be appointed by council, and then the N says she'll be included in the city's pay and class, classification plan? My understanding is council's appointed officials are not.
That should come out.
In the classification plan, they are unclassified.
We'll strike that, that is a good catch, thanks. That's the reason we do presentations.
That's right, thank you.
Spencer, I, we need a majority of council to vote on that, on that issue.
Just give guidance, because we're not voting today, we would bring this back, if it's okay with you all, we'll bring it back on the 19th.
I understand, I won't be here on the 19th, that's when I, I'm a delegate to the Democratic Convention, it starts on the 18th, well, 19th in Chicago, so I won't be here for that meeting.
We can do it whenever council wants it, thinking the 19th, that's when we're gonna hold the public hearing.
Okay.
Well, I'm confused, because I thought you asked me to go in your place. Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, I'm 72, I don't remember that.
How quickly they forget.
Hey, use whatever you can, right Mayor?
Would it be okay for us to move forward on the 19th, or you think we should?
I think we're fine on the 19th.
We'll go ahead and advertise.
Okay, thank you, thank you Mr. Cobb.
Thank you.
Thank you Mayor.
Okay.
And next, Mayor, we have several items that are up for consideration or discussion. And these, if I can give an overall view, I've talked with our city clerk, and the idea is, there are several steps in here. And one of the ideas is that we went through this process, is it would be helpful if we had in our code one place to put all advisory boards. So we're proposing to create a Division Three, but in doing that, because we want to make sure that we have everything in order, that all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. Talked with our city clerk, it might be helpful if we pull it all together. In other words, we're gonna grab where other advisory boards are located elsewhere in the code, such as the Mill Mountain Advisory Board, and put them all under Division Three, the Arts Commission. So we have these, and you'll hear the presentation, I'm gonna introduce a presentation from Roanoke Neighborhood, RNA, and then get into it, they'll go through that. But you have a draft of what the proposed changes. There is the, the removal of the Youth Athletics Review Board and combining some of those duties into the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. So we've worked with them, they're aware that this is occurring, but we've told them that today is only a presentation. In other words, no action will be taken today. So we haven't gone into as in-depth, other than they know it's being discussed today.
Thanks Tim, I'm glad you said that, because I got a lot of calls this weekend.
Right.
Words coming around on that, so, thank you.
Right, and we'll go into more in-depth with them, but wanted to get through today's presentation if that's something that council wants to consider to move forward. And then to have the, the PrAB, if you will, put into our code, put it under that Division Three, and add a number of those duties and considerations that the Youth Athletics Board is currently doing, be part of the PrAB. But if I can next, have Ms. Molly Hunter, who works with our neighborhoods, and wants to come up and speak real briefly on the RNA and its name, and a discussion on that perhaps might occur, thank you.
Hello, thank you guys, can everybody hear me?
Hey.
Excellent, thank you guys so much for letting me come to speak to you today. Again, I'm Molly Hunter, Neighborhood Services Coordinator, I'm liaison to the RNA. Alicia is here representing the RNA with me today. So the RNA piece of this, there should be a presentation that was included in your packets, I'm gonna go over that very, very quickly, if you have questions and we can get to that. History of the RNA, just kind of setting us up, how, how the RNA works right now, it was established in 1981, it's gone through a couple of different iterations. Currently, roughly half of the board, five members, are appointed by council. Those five members then appoint four more members, so there are council appointees and there are RNA appointees. Term rotations, the way that it was set up in 2019, it's supposed to be three-year terms and then somebody is, like, three people are rotating off every single year. So it should be like in 2025, three terms, and 2026, three terms, 2027, three terms, and then that just continues in a cycle. Unfortunately, we are not, that is not what has happened, we're off on term rotation right now, so we've got more than half the board rotating off in one given year, then two members, then two. I was not here when that happened, so I can't speak to exactly how we got there, but I have some suspicions. I think it comes back to the fact that the board, half of them are appointed by the board, which is a problem because there's no established, like, documentation through the clerk's office. The reason that we know who is on, you know, the Planning Commission is because the clerk's office takes care of that and makes sure that everybody is, you know, signing their oaths and going through all of that. But because half of the board isn't, that leads to confusion. The, the long and short of it is, there, it's extended vacancies on the RNA, which makes the board less effective overall when we have extended vacancies, it makes it harder for the RNA to reach a quorum, they can't vote on grant funding, that's a really, really big thing. So yeah, that's kind of a very, very quick overview, but the goal is to put the RNA somewhere in the code and establish that all nine members are appointed by council, so that we don't have those documentation issues occurring anymore. Any questions?
Even brought your attorney with you, I'm impressed.
If that's okay, I just want to say thank you to Molly and the clerk's office and the city attorney's office for setting us straight. I think you all know there were a lot of vacancies during the COVID time period in the Neighborhood Services Office and on RNA, and it became a bit of a mess to keep up with the paperwork, so I really, really appreciate everyone helping us get this straight, and I think this will help, help us continue our trajectory of having a fully staffed board.
Vice Mayor.
I, just two quick questions, and this has more to do with the, you know, sustaining people on the, the board. As is typical, I think, with a lot of our appointments, that once someone's appointed, what are, first of all, let me ask, what are the length of terms on the RNA right now? Is it one year, three years?
Three years.
Three years, and then is there an option to serve up to three terms, nine years?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that for continuity sake, because I know even that's been difficult with vacancies and the confusion around appointments. The other thing with the name, I noticed Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates Advisory is, that seems really long.
That is totally open to discussion, it's kind of a placeholder, we can keep the acronym the same, RNA, I, I don't have any strong feelings, ultimately that would be up to the RNA. We've been discussing this over the last year or so, so, I mean, they have their meeting on Thursday, they can talk about it then, if they have any strong feelings, I can come back to you guys.
Okay, thank you, thank you Mayor.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I did have a question. I went through this measure and I have to say, it's, it's very overwhelming and it is, as far as I'm concerned, and it's sort of, overreaching. When I read all about your purpose and your responsibilities that are being placed on volunteers, and when you look at the average person we as council has to appoint, some will come with so much knowledge and, and some will not, and based on what you have here, you're really looking for leadership skills, you're looking for a lot of expertise. And then you go on, and that's why I'm just, you have to read them, read one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. And when I read things such as overseeing the administration of your neighborhood grant program, so you think the person that you are putting, putting on there needs to have some expertise in some kind of grant program, otherwise they're voting on things as Mr. Fitzpatrick says, you come on if you don't know, then you have a lot of questions you're trying to ask, how did this come about, et cetera. Advising and counseling neighborhood-based organizations and establishing development and expanding their organization administrative advocacy capacity in promotion of the neighborhoods, that's a lot, and I want to say, what is that? If I was coming on, I would want someone to explain that to me, and no disrespect to you Molly, but you're just coming on and you're still trying to find your way. So to me, it's almost blind leading the blind, and, and I can respond back to how the mess came about, how the qualifications and the terms got screwed up, they, there was, there was something in place. It got messed up, and I'm not preaching to the crowd, I'm not trying to step on nobody's toes, I just speak the truth. When it moved from Neighborhood Services and went under the management, it went one person, and then that person had to move out, and within a two to three years, we had new people in place, and no one knew what was going on because there was no one, no tenure there to help bridge that gap. And I'm afraid that looking at all of this, it looks good on paper, but we're gonna find ourselves again, back right here, because people are going to leave once the chair leaves and you reappoint, although they get nine years, some are gonna be so overwhelmed that they're gonna leave, and even if you do stay, I pray you do, but you're not gonna be able to handle all of this, you're only one person. And I'm reading down to the point where the responsibilities and where they're gonna work with you and you're gonna be doing all of this, and you're already trying to do Neighborhood Services, it's a lot. So I'm just saying, think about what all we're trying to bridge, to mimic what other bodies are doing, because again, you're only dealing with volunteers, and they are just the average person that we're trying to, who wants to participate, want to be active in, in being part of something here. And if they don't have the expertise, we're gonna more or less scare them away because they won't qualify.
Ms. Moon Reynolds, I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I tend to agree with you, but I'm thinking, what would be an alternative, what would be your recommendation?
Oh, I don't have one, and I'm putting it back on them, I'm sorry, that's what I'm saying, that's why I posed it to the administration. Yeah, yeah, and that's what I'm saying from council standpoint, I'm putting it back to the administration side to massage this, yes, I don't know, and, and I'm just putting it back here.
What we can do is take your input.
Yeah.
And, and note it as much more of an advisory role, because I think that if we do that, that'll soften a lot of your concerns, whereas we'll still. that'll soften a lot of your concerns, whereas we'll still have the involvement of the community, 'cause, realize what you really want from your RNA is you want to make sure that you have strong neighborhoods, that those strong neighborhoods have a voice in how we take about policies that affect those neighborhoods. So I think we can do that and address your concerns, and that's even more reason, if we could, would love if we can work together to bring all this together and do another presentation in September. I hear Molly over my shoulder, even though she hadn't said it, I can feel her saying, "Tim, we have to have this done before October," and then we would consider it for a vote on the September 16th date.
But, Mr. Spencer, I'm still having questions, though, how would we fix that concern, though? I mean, if it's overwhelming.
I will work with them and then have a lot of it, I think, as, as Ms. Moon Reynolds has noted, what we've done with other advisory boards, take a lot of that similar language, but still address the concerns that have been raised by this, and we'll come up with solutions.
Uh, Mayor, I think Dr. Patton was gonna say something, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Um, I heard Councilwoman Moon to say that this was under a neighborhood, um, component of municipal government.
Yes.
I'd like to take the time to see if that component still exists, and see if it matches better being under that component than under the city manager. Because I think you, I heard you say this now is under the city manager.
Yes.
I, I, as I've worked with neighborhoods, this kind of effort is under the entity that actually is the neighborhood, whatever it is, and not in the city manager's realm. So if you give us a minute so that Mr. Spencer and I can talk, look at the organization with the neighborhood entity that oversees it, and then when we come back to you, we will have it in its right place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Molly, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, are you, is council good with our approach of coming back with another presentation, will be a more thorough, but I'm glad we had an opportunity to talk on these two items separately, just because they're the ones that are being changed most significantly.
Yeah, that makes, that makes a lot of sense, thank you, 'cause I was confused for a minute on how we could fix it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All right, if there's no further business, council will be in recess until a 2:00 PM meeting for closed session here, uh, in the conference room. All right? Thank you.